It's June 5th, 2024.
Recording in progress.
Meeting is being audio recorded remotely on Zoom and live streamed on RCTV. We can waive the Board of the Code of Conduct tonight, I think, and just ask that remote participants state their name and that all votes must be taken by roll call.
And Vivek's not here, and I'll call the cab to order.
Vivek's actually on Zoom, and I think he planned on calling it to order. I just don't think he can hear us. Sorry, just missing me. He said he can't hear anything, so I'll work from there.
Everybody logs up and logs back in.
Someone will check his.
Joe McDonough, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, hi, sure.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
So do we get to call the cab to order or is?
Yeah, so you did it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there any public comment tonight? Once again.
Can anyone hear me? I'm sorry, I can't hear anyone.
No public comment, thank you. Do we have any reports, any liaison reports?
They're proud to matter.
We're all here.
All here.
We do not need to report. So why don't we move right into the presentation of the audit findings?
Good evening, Scott McIntyre, one of the partners at Markham in charge of the audit here in RMLD. I appreciate the opportunity to come in tonight with the groups here and.
Hi, everyone. Can anyone hear me?
The results of our audit of your financial statements. I met with today, I met with the smaller group and walked through things in quite detail. I'm only going to take a few minutes tonight and walk through some of the high points. Our what is up on this, it was up on the screen. I think Eric will get it back there in a minute. As I understand, it's not in your packages. It can be distributed later. This is what we call our governance letter. This, to me, is the most important communication you get from us. It tells us how the audit went. I'm very pleased to be able to report to you that our audit of your financial statements went very well, on the books and records being good working order. We did not need to propose any significant audit adjustments. There are some significant estimates in there that were discussed in deep detail, very normal and customary. And the only non-audit service that we've prepared, provided to RMLD was the actual pulling together of the financial statements. All that required communication, needed to tell you about it. Went into a lot more detail earlier today. And with that, if I could flip over to the to the financial statements and go to the first page right after the table of contents. This is our audit opinion. It is what is technically referred to as an unmodified opinion. More generically, it's called a clean opinion in our opinion, based on the standards that we followed. Your financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Following our opinion is management's discussion and analysis. I'm not going to get into that at all. It's a great resource to go back to at a later point in time. I'm going to flip all the way down to print page nine, which is the second half of your statement of net position. First half is the asset deferred outflow side. This page is your is your liabilities and net position. That position here, total net position in the bottom, the first column of numbers is calendar 23. Second, the second column is calendar 22. Total net position is of $146 million. Of course, a lot of that's in the property, plant, and equipment. The number that also gets a lot of attention is the unrestricted net position of $40,413,000, up approximately $7 million over the prior year, driven by fuel costs that were less than budgeted during the year. If I go down to the next page, you see that right here. Total operating revenues, and this is this is page 10, print page 10 at the top. You see operating revenues are very consistent, $102 million this year, $100 in the prior year. But right below that, cost of purchased electricity, $56 million in calendar 23, $64, $64.7 million in the prior year. That what that drove, as I go to scroll down to the bottom of this particular page, and again, print page 10, third number up from the bottom, the change in net position means the the revenues exceeded the expenditures by about $14.5 million, $1 million up from the prior year, and it's up from the prior year because of the fuel costs less than anticipated. With all that being said, we always find that the statement of cash flows is probably the most important page in an organization like this. It's page, a print page 11, it's up on the screen. The first full number that you see on the screen is the net cash provided by operations of $17.3 million. That what that's doing is it's providing you the liquidity to reinvest in your property, plant, and equipment. It's also increasing your ability to put some funds, restrict some of the cash that's generated for future capital expansions. And there was a very robust conversation earlier tonight about the needs of the plant going forward. And so you see that $17.3 million in net cash provided by operations. It's covering the return to the town of Reading, and it's covering the acquisition and construction of capital assets of almost $9 million. And the difference is going into reserve accounts. So that is about as fast as I can walk through a set of financial statements. I will, I went through in much, much more detail earlier this afternoon, but I will certainly try to take any questions. I just would reiterate that the most important thing that I think I can communicate to the to the organization tonight is that our audit went very well and that the books and records were in good working order. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair and try to answer any questions that the group may have.
Just one quick one on cash flows, the customer purchase power adjustments, what does that cover on the cash flow statement? Turn it live from the top.
Oh, the $6.7 million?
Right.
That is the inflows of resources from the adjustments that are made. The the purchase power adjustments, the fuel charge adjustment, and the capacity and transmission adjustments, the cash that came in from those adjustments. Okay.
We didn't end up significantly low rate. We make adjustments to fuel and PPCT each month. So we didn't drop them significantly each year because we're trying to build up the reserves, which is in the balance sheet for the, so that was intended to keep reserves. So that that didn't drop as low as the cost of electricity, the 56 versus the 65. So the majority of that is in that $6.7 million, the majority of it. So all related to that dropping the cost.
So do you have any comments?
Something, Bam and Ray.
In more detail today, you know, I think the, on the whole, we voted to approve. No, no concerns or detailed questions. I can, I can read the motion unless we want more.
Just one other question. So if we have liquidity in the fuel account, does that go right back into the fuel account or does it stay as liquid?
Right now, it stays in the fuel account.
Okay.
We're going to move it elsewhere. We would need to make some provisions.
What would you have to do? What kind of?
We'd have to make some provisions. It's a restricted account, so we don't, we can't just move it around.
Right, fine.
Yeah. Hold motion.
Yeah. I read the motion. The move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners accept the 2023 audit report from Markham LPL fiscal year ended December 31st, 2023, as presented on the recommendation of the RMLD Board of Commissioners sub-audit committee.
Second.
At the end, also, the town, the town of Reading also approved it, so they, we just add at the end, in the town of Reading audit committee, that they approved it also.
In the town of Reading.
Yeah. Except that despite the main motion, yes, okay.
Do we have a second on this?
Second.
Any further discussion? One paper. Harry's five oh. Great, thank you. So now we'll have a present report from the well, that was the audit subcommittee, sorry, approval of minutes.
The RMLD Board of Commissioners approved the February 28th, 2024, March 27th, 2024, and April 3rd, 2024 open session meeting minutes, as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary.
Second.
Sorry, can we add the April 17th minute on there as well?
Seventeen, yeah. Second.
Right, I think we had a second until any discussion of them user, it's okay. First, okay, Bill. We'll learn to be, hit the button right away.
We'll take raise.
Any discussion or edits or comments on the minutes? Provo?
Yeah.
One favor? The motion carries five oh. And now a report from the from the Power Supply and Load Management Committee.
I think we have some slides. So I'll start with just a summary of the committee so far. So we've got a very busy four or five weeks or so meeting as a committee. Just membership recap, myself, who was voted Chair of the Subcommittee, and Bob, Vivek, and Ken, all part of the Subcommittee as well. So we, we really wanted to focus on vetting the opportunity, financials, milestones, and risks specific to the carbon capture fuel cell in territory generation as our first quarter of safety. We did discuss whether we would expand our scope once we get kind of through that process, but you know, felt given the sense of urgency that the RMLD leadership team has on that, it made sense to focus our attention there. We had some weekly sessions ahead of this key decision point that's coming up. So for example, we have this decision point tonight around the owner engineer procurement, which Greg will come, will will take us all through. But we really wanted to focus on the procurement process, the timeline of those critical decision points, so really understanding when do we have to make decisions? Why? How does it impact the funds flow, and specifically any creation of value for capture of grants, et cetera, that we could create a detailed risk assessment, and then the customer rate impact with and without this system. So we understand really what the the end user impact is going to be here. So the the output of this is really the artifacts or the files that you see following this, which were, in our opinion, kind of the most critical outputs of the conversation that helped frame the why on this carbon capture fuel cell and kind of the impact of that. So what I asked Greg to do is kind of go through those four or so key deliverables out of the Subcommittee so that everybody on the CAB and the Board of Commissioners could kind of get up to speed on what we've been talking about. So we'll just throw it over to Greg at that point to to start taking us through some of that. Unless there's any questions on the committee and how we've been operating, those types of things.
So this meant to be an intermediate update. So big picture. This is one project associated with in in territory generation, which we've been talking about for a while. It's part of our strategic plan for last year. This is a particular project that we focus on right now. The big, the timeline here is what we're looking at. The key pieces to commission, if we decide to move forward with it, is to commission the system in 2026, the first half of 2026. There are a lot of things that have to happen between now and then. The most important thing is to to continue doing the due diligence work that we're doing right now, and then come back in the June meeting to propose to both the CAB and the VOC to continue moving forward more formally with the project. So I won't go through all the individual details, but there's a lot of work that needs to happen between now and the end of December of 2024 this year. The reason why that's an important element is that carbon capture fuel cells currently are eligible for investment tax credit on a federal level.
Fuel cell only or carbon capture specifically?
Fuel cells specifically, yeah, fuel cell specifically.
Okay, without the carbon capture?
Carbon capture. We haven't looked at carbon capture from the ITC perspective because we're intending not to to purchase it, although it's.
But it's a standalone fuel cells.
Fuel cells standalone have the ITC. Now, there's a potential that that could be extended, but you know, our goal is to, what we know right now is the, you have to have, so there's some provisions that we have to do to make sure that we are safe harbor by the end of this year. So that's the working, that's the working assumption we're working on right now. There's a lot of approvals and permits, et cetera, again, if we decide to move forward. So there's a lot of stuff that that comes forward. So big picture, key decisions this summer. We move forward, safe harbor by the end of this year. A lot of work the following two years, commissioning roughly 18 months thereafter. So two years from now is if we decide to move forward. We, we, obviously, a project of this magnitude and size, this is a strategic shift for RMLD, right? We're getting back into the generation business if we pursue a project like this. We categorize the the risk into four main buckets, financial, fuel supply, technology, and we call that external opinion. At the end of the day, we're looking through each one of these in detail. On the financial side, we have more work to do. We spent a lot of time in detailed financials. But in terms of risk, the key risk is if we do move forward, to make sure we hit the timeline, some key timelines by the end of September in order to be qualified for 40% investment tax credit. There are three primary fuel cell providers. Each of them qualify for the 10% adder on top of the 30% ITC, so that's why that 40% is in there. Obviously, that's a big number. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. The other element is fuel supply. There's three key pieces. We'll talk a little more detail. It's a second in terms of risk. Fuel supply is the next element. So we're continuing it as part of our analysis and due diligence to create a firm supply. There's a bunch of different options, but what we've learned so far is that our plan would be to run this basically as base load, which would mean roughly 8,300 hours a year, 8,300 hours a year out of 8,760, so they're roughly 8,760 hours in a year. In a situation like that, that we become a very interesting customer to a gas supplier. And we're looking at, we're looking at a couple of different options, but we've got discussions. We've had several discussions. We've got more tomorrow, so we'll continue. That's a key piece in terms of risk. The other, the other one is on the external opinion transparency with the Commonwealth. This spring, we've done a lot of meetings with the Commonwealth. While this is a significant reduction in CO2 emitted emitting, and as you guys remember, back in February, we committed as part of our policy 30 to be supportive of not only the compliance obligations of climate, of the 2021 Climate Bill, but also informally be supportive of the Commonwealth's greenhouse gas goals. That carbon capture piece is critically important. However, this particular solution does use natural gas. And while that's not the criteria for for decisions or or opinions, et cetera, relative to the Commonwealth, the Commonwealth has publicly stated that they that they're cautious about new natural gas projects, probably the best way to say that. So that's an important piece. The last piece there, the last bullet, failure mode and effects analysis. Pam had suggested we do that. I'm going to give you a quick snapshot here in just a second. But it's a little more detailed level in terms of how we're trying to manage risk. I'll walk through that right now. So the team put together, this is a, the intention here is not to read all the details here, but to let you guys know that there are some key risks that we are managing. We talked a minute ago about fuel supply. There's the timing of the the ITC, the investment tax credit. We said interconnection challenges, but this would be a system that would be installed within our territory. The interconnection challenges are not really within our territory. They are just making sure that ISO New England does the proper approvals, just for you all to know. As of this spring, the ISO New England has requested level three studies for any projects over one megawatt. And as we have assembled a full list of all the different projects we're looking at, we're looking at just under 70 megawatts of projects. So we'll have to go through this. As we had in that timeline, there was a, an elongated about 18 month process. But I, it'll be one of the risk factors we have to manage. But ISO New England has basically said, since this is what is known as a load reducer, we're not adding load. It's a load reducer. We're not generating. Our intention is not to put any additional power onto the network. We're a simpler analysis. So we don't think there's a big risk there, but it's not zero. And then the last piece is non-carbon qualification. As we've, we've talked about in our meetings, our intention is to, there's a provision in the 2021 Climate Bill that allows for a system like this, or any system that reduces carbon more than 50% of a combined cycle. Traditional natural gas generator, it would qualify for clean energy certificates. The system that we're proposing here would be 90% less or 10% as opposed to 50%, so way below it. We don't think there's a problem there, but we're will be one of the early ones to actually do the base calculation. So for the reference account, so it works to be done there. That's not significant. But we're going to continue updating this table. It's a table that we've shared amongst the Subcommittee. There's a lot of pieces. There's risk factors, that there's the risk factors themselves, how we mitigate them, how, you know, what controls you can put in place, how we, how we make sure we're aware of them and, you know, who's the key driver behind them. So it's a nice, it's a nice framework for us to manage the process. Last two pieces, again, part of the Subcommittee. Just for clarity, I'll walk through the implications in terms of a customer bill. This is a, this is a significant financial investment. It's a $100 million investment, and then when you take the tax credit, it gets down to 60, and then there's cost that we're going to have. It's a $70 million investment, so it's not trivial. So as you, as we've talked about before, we want to make sure we look at the numbers carefully. The recommendation was if we can draw some sort of a funds flow, so we, we've got a first cut at this funds flow. The Subcommittee, we showed an earlier version, we made some updates to it based on inputs, but the basic, there's two basic phases. There's the construction phase in terms of building it. I'll walk you through some quick stuff here. And then there's the operational phase, once it's up and running in 2026, again, if we move forward. From the construction perspective, the working assumptions right now is that, so in this particular chart on left-hand side, sources and uses, or inflows in the top, outflows in the bottom. Our intention would be to basically borrow the full amount upfront from a bank. The model is set up that way. We may choose not to borrow all of it, but that's the way the model, it's the most conservative case. We would, we would do full bond borrowing. The majority of that would get paid to an EPC. It would be basically a third party that would do a full term key installation of the entire system. We'll talk about that design build here in the next section. That's where the majority, a smaller portion would would go to pay subcontractors. Basically, if you think about everything inside the fence is the EPC and everything outside the fence, how it connects to our network, how we feed gas to it, how we take water from it, et cetera, that would also be on the right-hand column. So the majority of it's on the left hand of EPC. Within the Subcommittee, we've looked at the magnitude of those dollars. But just, you know, for for this session, kind of a big sense of flow. Any questions on this part of funds flow? I'll go into the operations section in just a second. This is basically just to set up to get the system ready to run. Operational phase. So now in 2026, and for the next 15 years, these are the cash flows associated with operating. So again, we have custom, so we're basically the, the intention, this is a make buy decision. So instead of buying power off of the wholesale market, we're actually making it inside. In both cases, we charge the customers for the energy that we produce, so regular rates. We've got some, some detailed analysis to update, but again, same thing on the the right-hand side, inflows in the top, outflows on the bottom. So customers basically pay for power, just like they do today. In this case, we make it instead of buy it. And then the current model, the carbon capture equipment, that's what CC stands for. The current model is that we would not, to go back. Yeah, it's probably should put it somewhere. In terms of the of the funds flow here, our intention is to own all of the fuel cell equipment and have somebody manage it under an O and M agreement. I'll talk about that in a second, but not own the carbon capture equipment. So we, the carbon capture equipment would not be owned by us. Just hang on that thought just for a second, okay? We would basically, the carbon capture equipment would basically pay us for the CO2 that comes out of the system. They would pay RMLD. That equipment requires energy to run. We would charge them for the electricity to run that system, another inflow. And then the other two inflows are carbon credits. So what's not in the model on the far right-hand side, and that's why it's a light blue, but the the detailed analysis that we've been working on with the Subcommittee, it's the three arrows on the left, customer sales, CO2 sales, kilowatt hour sales to the carbon capture equipment. Those are all inflows in the model. But we haven't yet quantum, well, we haven't added to our model sales from carbon credits, so that's a net positive if we decide to do that, or certificate sales as well. So those are two adders if we decide to go down that path, but that would be the inflows. The outflows, the first piece would be to pay back, would be to pay the bond back, and that would be on a monthly basis. It'd be a fixed rate. It would be, so just like the right, you know, think of it as a mortgage or a car loan or whatever. But over that 15-year period, we would pay that, so that would be one of the outflows. We would pay the EPC for an O and M contract. The structure that we would have with them is that they would basically operate and maintain the system, not RMLD, although we would own the asset, and there would be performance provisions tied to that. And then, of course, the other last element that would flow through RMLD financials would be the fuel to supply the natural gas system. So that's kind of a big picture in terms of the flows. The key participants in the operation area is basically, obviously, the banks are key participant, we're paying them, they're, they're a passive party, right? To make sure we pay the note. The EPC, whoever that, the person who built it is also the O and M contractor. The reason why that's the same person is they want to build it because they're going to basically sign it for performance warranty, so they want to build it, they, they want it to be built. And obviously, the natural gas supplier will be whoever we buy natural gas from. One last piece, sorry to go back to the structure. In terms of the total note, that would be two structures, there'd be two sources or two blocks. There would be for 60% of the total CapEx would be roughly 60% would be the 15-year bond, and then we'd do a three-year short-term note for 40% of the CapEx because that, we would get that money back from the IRS once we're fully commissioned. So while we're building it, there's no cash inflow from the investment tax rebate, tax grant, until it's actually right. So that would, and then we'd pay that off right away. So anyways, that's big picture.
So Greg, my question is, what's the process to get the bond in place?
What's what?
What is going to be the process to get the bonds in place and the note and the short-term note? What is the process?
So we've already been, so the process basically is to quantify the big picture. And then we have two, so we've done a little bit of research already, and we have two sources that we could work through. One would be potentially the town of Reading, and the other one would be an agency called EMWIC. EMWIC is basically set up as a, for projects just like this. It's a state agency. So that, that's a provision that's already in place. It's pretty straightforward. And we've actually already, Bill and Ben have had a chance to talk to EMWIC about what we're trying to do and there's, so they think that we can get all this in place in the timeline that we're talking about.
Yes, we haven't got a town meeting. There was some political, I should say, there's political considerations that will come into play.
Correct.
That'll be part of the process.
Well, we have not made that decision yet. We suspect that the cleaner, simpler way would be to go through.
They go to EMWIC, right? Good, good.
So one other question.
Yeah.
So your theory on having a contract for someone for the O and M part, this you wouldn't have to add staff into here? And it would just be a payment out to them?
Yeah, we, I mean, we might have part of an FTE. We have to keep an eye on it. We have to manage it, but. Yeah, we're not going to add a bunch of FTEs to run it. That's correct. Yeah, and that's in our model. And the model is, so we've actually shared, you know, we've made a couple, we've continued to update the financial model with the Subcommittee. So what, what's the implication for residential bill? So that's another piece of the analysis that we went through. This basically, there's a lot of data here. So this is, this is a comparison. So if you look at the quarter of the way from the bottom, total average monthly bill baseline. So that basically is if we were not to pursue this project, to our best estimate, what an average monthly bill would look like between 2026 and 2040. And in the middle there, between 2029 and 2037, we basically, it's just a straight line piece. So just trying to give you an idea of the beginning year and the end of the year. So you can see that an average rate dollars per kilowatt hour, a whole bunch of assumptions that are going to the model in terms of what the increase is, it's capacity charges, transmission charges, energy charges, and operating costs, you know, we're going to end up in the range instead of being 19 cents a kilowatt hour. This is residential example, in the range of 30 cents a kilowatt hour. The next, in between those two, it says total average monthly bill with carbon capture fuel cell. So you can see it's a couple of dollars less, 160 versus 156 for 2026. In 2040, it's 337 versus 320. That's a net savings of $3.5 in 2026 and $16 in 2040. So net-net across the bottom percent of baseline net reduction, it's somewhere between, you know, 2 and 5% with the current model we're looking at right now, reduction in bills. So it's less expensive, but more importantly, it's less expensive right out of the gate. So it's not, because of the way we structure the business model, et cetera, it's not like you, you pay in for the first seven years and then all the gravy's there. It's not like you, you pay in for the first seven years and then all the gravy's thereafter. It's net positives from year one, yeah, so that's just, again, we have more work to do, this is an intermediate snapshot. Um, there's a, there's a lot of assumptions built into all the analysis, but we basically, as a subcommittee, wanted to give you an idea of all the things we've been looking at, so. As Pam mentioned, right, you know, what's the schedule, what are key action items, what are the key risks? What key things we need to work out, and we got to continue working on, um, the financial model as well. That's a quick snapshot, any else that we should add?
If there are any, um, you know, we feel like we're covering the, the most critical topics, but if there are topics that we haven't listed, that the. The broader committees want us to dive into, you know, we're happy to add that, um, we talked about. Some of our next topics, topics going to that kind of external perspective, communication, what is that messaging going to look like to? Uh, stakeholders in town and, and rate holders, uh, rate payers, excuse me, um. Uh, obviously getting more into the procurement process and supporting that, um, appropriately as that goes through, but if there are other topics that. We should be looking at, we can do that.
Great.
Yeah, yeah, and Greg, this is Vivek, and I think, you know, you, I think you said. That it's net positive from year one, but may not be from day one, but it's from year one, right?
Year one, that's correct, Vivek, yeah.
It's, it's year one, not day one.
In reality, maybe it's going to be fifteenth or eighteenth month, but yes. The key thing is that it's early in the process, but yes, good correction.
Thank you.
Oh, you said, it's going to be fifteen year bond?
Yes.
What's the life expectancy of a fuel cell?
The way the, so, um, it depends how many, so I don't have a good answer for that, but what I, I mean, for that specific question, but what I do have the answer for is that O and M. Um, so for that fifteen year life, the system is warranted to run at ninety five percent availability. During the entire fifteen years. And then if it falls below ninety percent, then there would be liquidating damages. So the reason, the way, the way we structured the model is that during that fifteen year period, as modules. If, if, cause then it's, it's a big, it's a very modular system. If systems fail or don't perform at the right level, they will swap them out live. So they're always made, so as far as we're concerned, I mean, the question's good, I don't, I don't have the answer, but what I'm looking at is. Let's make sure that the output is there during the entire life of the project. Okay, but that's, we'll, that's an appropriate question for us to say, well, what is the, at, at, at the end of fifteen years, what, what's left?
Yeah, they're going to be maintaining it.
Correct.
Yeah, no, and, and Bloom is quite a mature technology, so they've been around, so they actually have data that they can show us and, right, so. It's not like some other companies.
In many ways, a fuel cell is fairly simple, I mean, there's not a lot of moving parts. I mean, with the critical part is that transfer media. Between the two endode and the cathode. Um, and that is really a moving part, so. It's not like an engine where you've got to change carburetor or transmission or pistons or any of the big moving parts that you expect with an engine. So in many ways, rather simple in terms of designs. Um, but it runs at a higher temperature, how long that membrane lasts. Is certainly a question, Zoom has some experience with it. It's modular, if you have to change a, a membrane out, that can be done, so. The, the, the technical risks are manageable.
Yeah. A good.
Need, need to be managed, need to be quantified. Contract guarantees need to be in place, but it, it's not extravagant.
Yeah, in terms of technology, so good question, um. That, that is, that's, that's a lower risk item, but not irrelevant, so that's a good question, okay.
Two, I have two quick questions, can you go back to the funds flowing slide? Um, kind of building on what, what Dennis was saying, you, you, you have not, no costs shown for RMLD itself, it's, it's a. Loan payment, it's your O and M contract and your gas, and you mentioned, okay, it might be an FTE, but surely this, something of this magnitude does take a lot of. Staff time and, uh, I don't know what else has to happen, but, so I, I would say there should be a, probably a fourth arrow, even if it's a small one. Of what does this cost the department, just to get this up and running, manage it?
Yeah, but, so, so you're right, we want to make sure we have that in the model, but, um. It would be an internal, good, good, well taken, we'll have to figure out how to put in the model, it, it might have a different, whatever, how would we structure it, it's going to be inside that blue box, but good, good reminder.
That's definitely a different department, division, whatever you want to call it, because. It's not a core competency now, so you're clearing that as a core competency later on, so. There's definitely multiple employees that are, and I would think an engineering background to do that.
And if, if the project has a fifteen year life, are there going to be in the optics? Reserves built in to go replace everything after fifteen years, or are we assuming that we just retire the system?
What we're modeling right now is we retire the system and remove the system.
Just remove.
Yeah, and so if we decide to keep it on. Then we can do too, we have to make sure that we put that in the model, the reserves, we've, we haven't put that in the final model yet, but we have to put that in.
Putting in reserves for either de-commissioning, or if it's great, why wouldn't we want to?
You would.
Keep it going.
Yeah, but you can, I mean, those are fresh. At some point eventually, you're going to have to remove the system, well, I bet.
Well, it's modular, you get a re- replacement basis.
It, at the end of the day, our intention, so the goal of this, there's a purpose behind the fifteen year structure. One, um, because it is natural gas, that it is, we position the purpose as a bridge technology. But there's a lot of things that are going to happen between twenty twenty six and twenty forty, forty forty one, twenty forty two. Um, so what we want to do is set the system up so that, um, RMLD. Um, has the, you know, has the flexibility to decide do we continue it, do we decommission it or whatever, and still have. And have the, have the cash in a position, so they can, they have plenty of flexibility, so that's the intention behind it.
But if you wanted to continue, you have to treat it like you do transformers, you can't replace it all at once. Like you're doing your transformers that are going to last fifteen years, twenty years. You're doing it in phases, so you never have to do it all at once, what you're talking about is running this for fifteen years. And decommissioning it, start and old, with whatever new technology or how it's advanced.
We're setting up the economics to give us that flexibility, so that, so that we don't have to, so once they got a new bond payment, et cetera. We, we're, like, we want to, at the end of the day, net cash positive in the first year and all the way through. Um, and if we decided at the end of fifteen years to say stop. It's, it's a positive project, it's not, there's no, the intention is not to have any. Additional costs that we haven't accounted for, we, we, we're not even perfect, but, you know, any, you know, that's why we're trying to do the O and M, and as Bill mentioned, they'll be maintained, it's a very modular system. So they'll be maintaining the system all along, you know.
So, so Greg, this is, this is, this is an asset we'll own, right? This is an asset we will own.
That is exactly right.
Yeah, so it's an asset we'll own, which will have some potential residual value, and then you can figure out what to do with it.
No, that's the other element, so from a financial perspective, you know, once we commission it. Um, it'll end up on the, it'll move from a different count to the balance sheet, so it'll be an asset that will then start to be depreciated. Over that fifteen year period, and then we'll have to go through, get to Pam on what we decide to do at, at the end of the fifteen years, the goal is to create flexibility. Without, without financial.
Cause it's seventy million dollar investment is based on. The equipment, and like I was just saying, not the employees and the overhead that you're going to build on your regular structure in RMLD. Not the O and M outsourced part of it, so that structure internally is going to be there when you have fifteen years. Comes out and see hopefully all the different.
Yeah, so.
Technology or project.
Um, so we'll go back and look a little more carefully in terms of how many FTEs. But the real intention, there might be one FTE, but literally. Um, it is, it is a third party managed system that generates electricity, and, and the O and M contract is, if there's a problem. Like, they, they, as Vivek mentioned, so depends on who, this particular case, you know, Bloom is the example. They monitor this twenty four seven, because they're on the hook to provide, I mean.
Yeah.
That O and M contract is basically a guarantee that, that that system is running at some level of performance.
I, I, I don't think it's one person, I do think it's at least two, because, um. You need to have, oh, if someone's on vacation, someone gets sick, you need that second person, so you know it's going to be at least two people involved in that, I would think.
But I, I imagine that there's multiple skills that will be required, and it won't be like two, like two people, it'll be. A little bit of skill scattered throughout the existing department, accounts payable will have a role, because they're going to have to pay the O and M contracting, whatever. You're right, it's going to be a little extra work, and it will be added staff time, so it may come to eighty hours per week. In aggregate, but it won't be like you're hiring two people, it'll be, it'll be something that rolls in, you'll need someone with. Someone with skills to be able to go out and see that the system is coming together, you need someone to pay the bills. You'll need someone to handle stuff, but that won't, that won't necessarily, it'll be like two new skills.
Station, there's going to be a step up transformer, there's going to be some breakers, there's going to be some relays.
There's that, that piece of it.
Is that piece also covered by the EPC maintenance contract? That'll be, so that'll be additional costs and work and house to maintain the equipment.
Yeah, correct.
If, if it's in a generator and all that, you have to test out the relays, anything at least once every six years or four years, and, and. There's going to be a lot of, there's going to be some increased O and M cost on the running side, it's probably minor compared to.
What you're saying, but. But we, we need to put in, I mean, the point's well taken, we need to make sure to the best of our ability, we put all this cost in.
So I think, I think as part of the procurement process, what we need to ensure is we have that roles and responsibilities. Matrix essentially in the document that says whoever is bidding on this, what's your expectation?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The, uh, needs to provide, where does their role start and stop, and where does the contractor's role start and stop? Uh, and then ensure that we hold them even on those things, you know. Service level agreements on response time and uptime and those types of things that they are responsible for.
Yep. So anyways, this was meant to be a working process snapshot, so a lot of work done, more to be done.
So ready to move to?
Yes, sir.
Next agenda.
Yes, please.
But let me just say, uh, great job by the team that put in a lot of extra time to make this happen. Uh, I think their, their input to Greg, I think, I will admit was really helpful, and. I know from my side, it being a, a board member, I mean, these are great systems that have been put in place, it only gives us a chance to. See where critical items are and get them managed and anticipated, so I, great job to the, to the subcommittee, commend them for their, for their effort contributions.
Thank you, so we're going to, um. Pam mentioned, right, there's a procurement process, there's a timeline, et cetera, um, and. Where we are right now is the procurement scenario is that we would do what is needed as a design build process. So there would be a bid process type, uh, associated with this, it's not a trivial. Amount, we haven't, it's not a foregone conclusion in terms of who the vendor would be to provide the system, um. So just real quickly, in that middle section there, likely procurement options, we have several different options, but the one we're going to end up, um. Pursuing is chapter one forty nine, which is design build. That design build, and this is another piece that we've had some discussions on, not these slides, but some of the. The opinions from council and the purchasing team, the procurement team inside our organization, um. It, it has some steps, but the intention behind the design bill that provides fairness in terms of the competitive bid process. It's a big number, so we want to make sure we do it properly. Um, but it also going back to the business model that we described before, it's meant to be a full turnkey. With subsequent O and M contracts, so the design bill structure allows for that configuration. Um, as opposed to RMLD, like we're doing with our substation, right, we're going, we're, we're talking in a few minutes, we, we bought a trans, we bought transformers. We're about to buy, um, switchgear and all sorts of equipment for the yard. Um, from a separate vendor, we're going to buy construction services, we're going to buy site, site, so we're basically. In that model, which is, you know, for substations and stuff we do, that's normal for us, going back to. The discussion we had, uh, as a subcommittee, this is different, so we like to do full turnkey, particularly from the perspective that we're expecting whoever builds it. To do that performance warranty, which is what we really want. Um. The, the, uh, the key piece of this design build would be to have an owner, so let me go back. Um, the, the key piece there is that it requires, um, the IG office, uh, the inspector general office. To approve this procedure, this process. And an owner's engineer is typically hired, it's not a prerequisite, but given the fact that. You know, we don't go out and build these systems on a regular basis. It is recommended that we, we ultimately have to hire an owner's engineer anyways, but we do it in preparation for the second step of this process. So this design build process has two main steps, one, it gives to hire. Owner's engineer, that would help us pre, prepare the materials, that we would then submit to the IG office for their approvals. Um, so there's the owner's engineer procurement, and then there's the whole system procurement, so two steps.
How do you, how do you go down this path under national law? And not make proprietary to somebody and still get to. Hire the people you want to do that, you know, writing the spec, I can understand, you have to hire engineer or engineers.
That's the first thing, yeah, yeah.
And then, but bottom national law is not making things proprietary, because you have that multiple people bid on it, but what you're trying to achieve. Is technically proprietary in some ways, right, because you have people you want to, want to work with, so is that? It might be complicated, you know, but you know.
No, 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 so, so, so I, so I understand the question completely, and this is why we want to do, this is why we want to do a formal bid process. So that it is not a biased process, um, so everything we've done so far has been proper. You notice, I mean, we've, we've had one vendor who has educated all of us in terms of a potential option. Um, what we're going to do with the owner's engineer is write a, um, not a, an equipment specific. We're going to, the bid, the, the way we have currently envisioned it and the guidance that we've got. Is to structure it in terms of, here's what I want the system to do, and not specify how the system does it.
And that's, and again, not to drive this on, but that's what, in the bid laws, you're not supposed to be able to. Say, like, multiple people have to be able to build a product that, to those specs, so, like, if you are writing it.
To build a system, so in this case, not so much, so we don't really, so, uh, we've got, at the end of the day, this is, this is a bunch of boxes inside a fence. The reality is, what we really care about is the, what comes out of that fence line. So we are really legitimately open to what that technology looks like. Now, the reality is, as we've had many discussions before, we've looked at a whole bunch of different technologies, we're down to a few. Um, but the idea behind this bid process, if somebody comes up with some other novel idea that achieves the goal, then we will look at that. When we do the evaluation of the bids to come in, so we'll, we'll purposely try and set it up, so, I mean, we will purposely set it up. Back to that last, it provides fairness in terms of the competitive bid process, it will not be, it will not be, it'll be designed around. Uh, output, as opposed to, you know, I want, you know, twenty, you know. Number ten stainless steel washers that have to be, you know. Two millimeters thick instead of a half a minute, whatever, you know, we're not going, we're not going to spec it that way, and that will be made by a particular plant in. You know, East Boston, when, that we're not. So I think we'll be, so the guidance of that so far, we want to keep it very fair, and that's how we're going to structure it, so we have a two step process. Um, at the end of the day, the idea behind the owner's engineer, um, is, you know, so there's technical expertise and advice. But more importantly, and it has to be a PE, um, you have to have a PE license, anyways, there's a bunch of details here. Um, but the key piece is for them to help us write the system spec. Um, that goes back to your point, is fair and balanced from the perspective of the IG office, because at the end of the day. Well, yeah, it did, so.
And that's where, that's probably just not envisioning, I guess.
Yeah, so, so we're, we're, you know, you're right, Dennis, we're learning as we're going, but, but the guidance we've gotten so far is, um. Well, we're not, you know, trying to. We're not forcing a single solution, we're trying to create options, at the end of the day, from our perspective, we're in electricity business. And we're not in the equipment business, we want to make sure whatever equipment we buy, fulfill, whether it's transformer, or it's a relay switch, it's cable, it's old, it's, you know. It's Milwaukee tools that we bought, you know, whatever it is, is that to serve our mission, which is reliable, low cost, not carbon, how we get there, we're flexible. All right, um, we've got a process to go through, I mean, I, I won't walk through all these individual steps, but, um, let me talk about the timeline. So unlike the previous timeline, these have specific dates. And our intention, remember, the very bottom of this is that the ITC safe harbor deadline is the end of December. In order for us to achieve that ITC safe harbor, we have to e- execute an EPC contract by the end of September. Um, of this year. And so we work backwards from those two dates, and there's a series of steps that have to happen, so as opposed to us waiting until June twentieth to say. You know, do we know for this project or not, but we're asking the board and the CAB. Is to approve our intention to make this first step to engage an owner's engineer. Not under the presumption that you guys are going to approve the final project, but to get set up so that if you do approve the final project, then we can make this happen. This is not a, you know, um. These are, so without, you know, again, we're going to go through a bid process for the OE for, so, so if we're not, just be careful not to, um. Guide the pricing that will come back from that. Um, if we move forward this process and the board decides not to move forward with the big, with the whole system. We will have spent, you know, several tens of thousands of dollars to make this, to get this far down the road, so. We're not, we're not making a commitment to spend seventy million dollars, we're making a commitment to spend several tens of thousands of dollars. So that's big picture, so, um. I mean, I can answer more questions in terms of the process, but it's a two step process, it's got a very short window, I mean, weeks are going to count. Um, to pull this off, we think we can make it happen, um, but again, we've worked backwards from the December thirty first safe harbor deadline. We've worked backwards from the December thirty first safe harbor deadline and uh. Also questions?
Big package, where do you go?
Uh, it'll, uh, we have some fight, yes. So it is. It's almost, we have a, we have to do final review tomorrow. Again, not to be presumptuous that you gotta approve it tonight, but in order to make something happen, yeah, it's basically, it's almost fully ready.
Uh, maybe we wanna read the motions and second them and then go for any questions at that point.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so, so Ken, can you read the motion, please, for the cap?
Uh, yes, move that the R M L D citizen advisory board recommend that the board of commissioners vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to perform a bid process for an owner's engineer. In accordance with Mass General Law, chapter seven C. Sections forty four to fifty eight for the purpose of pursuing a design bid delivery method for in-territory generation and storage projects. Approval. Approval to award the contracted selected owner's engineer from that bid process will be proposed under a separate and subsequent motion.
All in favor?
Well, what, are we voting now? Are we gonna have a discussion? I think we will, we'll have a discussion after we.
Okay, yeah, okay, fine. Alright, yeah.
Sorry. Phil makes a good point. Please proceed and have your discussion, and then we'll do our thing.
Any, any more discussion?
Well, one, one, my flight, I noticed there's a correction from chapter one forty nine. You corrected the M, M.
Seven C.
That's the correct one?
Yeah, seven C, so one forty nine is the umbrella. And um as we looked at, again, we're trying to be real technical accurate. So seven C is specific to the owner's engineer. So that was why the correction was made. But the umbrella is one forty nine, still designed.
Still getting used to having two boards doing their thing in one room. By, by the, the dean of our board. And then we are, then we do our thing. So when you guys are, have your discussion and vote, then we'll.
Sarah, and to, to ask a question on that. We're gonna vote, but then you guys may bear up a good point. So. With going forward, we may have to figure some things out to get around.
But Dennis, that, that's, that's how we, that's how it's been done in the past, right?
Moving forward, we may have to think about this. Because we may wanna have a, we, we do that, you do that, then we have a nice discussion. And then we vote first and then you vote, because all the information we share could change the vote. Alright, so that's.
Should we make our motion and second and then have a nice group discussion?
I'm just saying like.
That, that, that's a good process. That's good process. Thanks, Dennis.
Now, with the original rule, I think we all could participate. Alright, I think that, that's.
On behalf of council. We, we may comment in the context of your discussion. And then we will have a motion second. And maybe our questions will have been resolved.
We have to open up for us to discuss, right? It's their floor.
Well, no, you can participate, which we're participating in there. I don't see any problem with that.
Okay.
Yeah, no. So do you guys have any comments?
Have. They haven't made a recommendation yet, because they're still in vote. But because it's an open meeting and we're here, we can have a discussion on their discussion. Well, once they vote, then we shouldn't have any questions enough, so it'll be easy.
So let's have our, we, you've motioned and seconded, so we often all talk. So I have a comment, which is just that I would like to make sure that we have a chance to see. I, I know there will be a second step. What do those procurement documents look like that this engineer is coming up with? So we have a chance to weigh in and look at them, and I'm sure that will happen in the committee. But also, we should look closely at how. Uh, both the specs of the owner's engineer. Is, or when do you?
Yeah, you don't, you don't have a chance to look at that.
Okay.
Realistically, I mean, I'm just being, but the other one, the bigger picture one, absolutely. We, we can make, we, so we, we. Fit that easily into the subcommittee and the broader committee.
But you're saying the owner, th- this bid, you will write an issue without further input from any of us, including me.
Okay, that's, that's what we are, that's, yes, that's what we're asking.
You're gonna do that tomorrow.
It's already put together. The engineers from R F Q. Does it request for qualifications, request for proposals?
It, it's a, it's a qualifications based procurement, because what we're buying is experience.
Right, there's two ways. The R F Q request for qualifications is you get a bunch of engineers. Engineering firms together, and you kind of whittle through and you do that thing. And then the R F P is you do kind of the same thing, and then you get, they also provide a cost to do that proposal. So R F Q is more just get engineering firms qualifications and then picking the, the one that you think is the best qualified without any cost associated. And that's literally down to get qualification. Firms, but then the R F P is more a proposal where you ask engineering firms to propose how they're gonna own as an engineer for you. And then they have a cost with it. So first you evaluate them on their qualifications and their proposal on how they're gonna do the job. It's qualifications based. But the, the, the. Um, the procurement team is walking through the specifics of that, but it's, we're hiring skills. Not to say that. They both do, but one, they. Yeah, one, qualifications is you just look at qualifications and you pick a firm. A proposal is they actually give you a proposal of how they're gonna engineer whatever project you're asking for and their qualifications. Yeah, and you, and you evaluate that based on their technical ability and the proposal, and then you see their costs and go with the best. But just, just to clarify for you guys, so this owner's engineer is not designing the system. You know, I, I get that. Okay, nobody, it's important everybody understands. Your example is very appropriate. Um, and a good reminder, because everybody understands. This is almost an O, this is almost an O P, an O P M. So this is basically somebody to help us write that technical spec. That somebody else will design to. And there's just a couple ways to get that. Yeah, exactly right, so.
Yeah, it, it's, second Greg's. There are, he's the guy who's gonna.
From Mass General Law force you into two categories.
Yep.
Once, one, you, you'd never see the pricing until you select your.
That would be that model. Here we're designing build, so.
Qualifications are first, okay.
We're looking for, we're trying to buy expertise.
Expertise, yeah. And you could do that with polls too. It's just, it's just two different ways they're doing it. One, qualifications is, they're not actually telling you how they're gonna. Do the job for you. In this case, come up with the specs to, right, E P C, right? They're gonna just say, I, these are all the qualifications we have. These are all the projects we've done. This is all the stuff we've done. Please pick us. Where the R F P is, that's all that. Plus, this is how we're gonna do it for you. And then we're gonna provide a price that you're not gonna look at after you've already determined if we're qualified and our proposal's good.
So you would want a local. Engineering firm to take care of this, somebody who's familiar with Mass General.
And specifically the I G office.
Correct.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be local, it could be.
It doesn't, but you don't want somebody from. Mass General Law, you don't have the choice.
Yeah, you, you want people that could be from any, anywhere. They could be. Yeah, it's, yeah, it, you want people to be familiar with it regardless if they're from Mass.
Yeah, we're not, we, we don't care where our office is, they're experienced in Massachusetts and the. He's already, yeah. After they have experience.
Remind me, how, how long would we? Have this individual engaged? Would, they would go obviously from?
We would have them engaged for as short as four weeks and as long as two years.
Okay, so how, in the, in the, in the procurement process? How are we scoping? That.
Exactly that. So if we're gonna base, the procurement is, um, we need to move this process forward. Um, under the assumption that we're gonna, that we want this owner's engineer to walk us through the process to get the I G approval. And then subsequently help us manage the construction. But we're also going to state that we don't have formal approvals to move forward with this project.
Okay, so let's, the assumption of we go all the way through what you're asking us. That you will, what you will eventually ask us to do, uh, if. All comes back as expected, is this individual would see it all the way through the process? And if we deserve to decide at any point that this process does not continue, that individual's engagement is complete.
Right, yeah, basically, we're being, we're buying out.
Is that how it's gonna be? Just, just spread your hourly rate?
I, 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 I mean. Um, I don't know the answer to that, but we'll have the ability to exit. Um, the project so that if we decide not to move forward the project, or if we get to. September thirtieth, and for some reason, we can't build the project for whatever reason, we'll design the contract so that we'll exit the owner's engineer contract as well. That's the intention.
But you could, you know, you get to the first part of this. Or get to the I G approval, and then you could decide you might wanna work with a different engineer.
That could be true too. So that, we've had good counsel in terms of how to manage the. We, we put a lot of flexibility into the structure of this particular piece. But we gotta move quick. It's good. It's a good reminder. Good reminder. Other questions?
I mean, if you guys.
Ready for a vote, yes.
So I was, I was gonna ask you a roll call, because.
Yeah, okay, I'm here, I'm here.
So it's a roll call.
You're in the ceiling.
So, and are we ready for a vote? I think we are.
Tim Wood, I. Jason Small.
Dennis Kelly, I. Ken Walter, I. Number seven.
Okay. I for me, but yeah, if that counts.
Yes, thank you. So.
We now have the.
Now we need a, we need a red.
Move that the R M L D board of commissioners on the recommendation of the citizens advisory board. Vote to accept the general manager's recommendation to perform a bid process for an owner's, owner's engineer in accordance with Mass General Law. Chapter one forty nine A.
Of L G C, uh, seven C. Forty four to.
Thank you. For the purpose of pursuing a designed bid delivery method for in-territory generation and storage projects. Approval to award the contract to the selected owner's engineer from that bid process will be proposed under a separate and subsequent motion.
Second.
Read her rope. Yep, all in favor? Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Was it in the mail?
Okay, next topic.
The bid. Sure, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Move that I F P two thousand twenty four dash four, the fifteen K B switch gear assembly be awarded to. Avail, A V A I L, switchgear systems. Currents, sense of, uh, central electric and currentist. For three billion eight hundred seventy seven thousand pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter one sixty four, paragraph forty six B. On the recommendation of the general manager.
Second.
So, um, this is part of substation six, Wilmington Substation, um, project. We are, uh, we are in motion. So, uh, last year we ordered transformers, those transformers are due in. Um, at the end of this year, we are planning to do site prep this year. Um, but one of the longer lead items, um, as you'll see here from this particular bid, is the switchgear. Um, associated with the project. Um, as you noted here, we sent out uh, proposals through eight different companies. We received back five. Um, the prices range from three point eight million to seven point two million. You can see an associated table. Um, oh, by the way, I forgot to mention, the um. Capital, twenty twenty four capital budget for this project was three point five million dollars. We uh, went through an evaluation process uh internally with our engineering team and our procurement team, but also with um. Our engineering team, P L M, that's working on the project with us. They're doing design services as well. Um, so they uh, uh. They made some recommendations to us as well. Um, so our recommendation is to purchase it from Avail. And Avail happens to be the lowest priced bidder of this one. We don't always do lowest price. We look at the quality of the equipment as well. So on that note. Um, P L M has worked with Avail on several different projects. Um, Avail equipment has been recently installed with projects that uh P L M has done. At Chickapee, North Addleboro, Braintree, Devon's, Peabody, Norwood. Are, are all using um this equipment. Um, and then P L M is also working right now with uh. Proposed projects like we're doing, substation projects at both Devon's and Wakefield. So. From an equipment perspective, quality of equipment perspective against the substation, so we knew it had to be around for forty plus years. Um, even though they happen to be the lowest um bidder from a price perspective, uh, we think it's. The equipment is appropriate quality for what we're trying to do. The only drawback, as you can see from the table, um, is that their um delivery schedule is eighty weeks. Um, there are a couple that are twelve weeks shorter or eight weeks shorter. Um, but at the end of the day, we felt it was a, a good response to the bid proposals. Um, we feel comfortable with uh issuing the bid. Um, the one caveat, of course, is that the bid, uh, the lowest price bid is um. Three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars above the three point five million dollars, so about ten percent above. Um, what we did for the budget amount. So we think we should move forward with it. Uh, we think it's a good choice. Um, and it's the, and we need to place the order. Um, to keep the schedule. The ultimate, we'll, we'll probably at the um. Either July or September meeting, um, you guys saw my notes, um, but we'll have uh. The engineering lead kind of do a presentation on where we are at the substation at that point in time, just because it's a big project. We're starting, we're starting to do bigger, bigger price tag items now. Questions on the bid?
It's a minor dollar value, but I'm curious if you have an, an answer that the. Spare parts. Compares to the cost of acquisition are a lot higher. Just on a percentage basis versus the others. Is it a bigger package of? Spare parts, is it just? That's where they're making the money? Um, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so you're looking at the third, you know, the.
Just the fifty seven thousand in spare parts. As compared to the three million dollars and, or three twenty million dollars in equipment, you could look at across the board. That's more in line with Eaton or A D B, which is twice as expensive. So I'm just curious, we're buying more parts or if we're.
Uh, not necessarily. I, I think that goes back into how they, you know, you can, you, you can see in terms of the switchgear assembly, um. The, the intention was not to, you know, so we basically specified the spare parts that we wanted to have as part of the system. So I, it's, and at the end of the day, you know, like all these different prices, it's how they basically position. It's not that we tried to double or have or, or check the number.
It's not that they are proposing that we have a bigger. Cash of spare parts or something, okay.
You approve votes?
Yes.
All in favor? Poses, motion carries five oh. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Uh, so that, with that, we move on to scheduling. Any questions on the? Um, on the schedule? Note, we do have an August meeting. Uh, which is a little different, but probably important to have this year, given everything that's going on. Yeah, are you guys all set with the uh, with that uh schedule?
Yep.
I'm not sure if I'm available for July twenty five, but that's still up in the air right now.
Would sell the corn if, if Vex is available and Tim's available, but.
Yeah, we should be fine.
That's her before, great, thank you. And the board's schedules there for the city issues. Greg and Eric, no. Uh, with that, I think we're.
Okay, so, so then I guess the cap can adjourn, right?
Yes, sir.
So someone else, Ken, do you have to call the roll call vote or?
Uh, yeah, I'll uh, move that the citizens advisory board adjourned regular session and roll call vote is required.
Second.
Second. Tim Wood, I.
Jason Small.
Dennis Kelly, I. Ken Walter, I.
Rex, only I, yeah.
Thank you, it's been nice having you here. So now we're doing uh, we're. You want to hear the motion?
Move that the R M L D board of commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass, Mass General Law. Uh, chapter one sixty four, section forty seven D. Exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss the reputation character of physical condition or mental health. Rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss assist, discipline or dismissal of. Or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual and return to regular session for the sole corporates or adjournments.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call vote required.
Ms. Pacino. Reporter, I.
How would I? We stand adjourned.